Call the meeting order and want to welcome everybody. We'll start with a prayer from Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect Church.
Lord, again, we just thank you for the men and women that serve our community. Lord, we pray that you continue to give them wisdom and guidance. Lord, we thank you for our village and, Lord, I pray that you continue to bless our village and we continue to look towards you. Lord, we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Steve. Roll call.
Mark.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Martin.
Here.
Flucker.
Here.
Egling.
Here.
Okay, before you, the April 3 regular council meeting minutes. Any corrections?
Make a motion to approve as written.
Okay, second. A second. Roll call.
Egling. Yes. Mark.
Upstate.
Bassett.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Martin.
Upstate.
Beverly.
Yes.
Do you have before you the bills? Any questions?
Why is there two separate AED charges on that?
One of them is paid electronically, the other one I have to send a check.
Heart repair service, did you file them all? I shouldn't do a lot of that.
No, I don't know anybody else can do it. They're all booked up.
Can't do what?
Weld all those aluminum poles. Take out all those poles.
Who else you talk to?
Scott. Kale. Kale. So far out. These are for those banner flags that we hang downtown.
Any other questions? Concerns?
The Sherwood Mutual, is that still the initial build of the system and everything? And then we bought down. But I know they've been doing it in phases and stuff. Probably just building.
Are they done with you?
Yeah, pretty much still got some things to do with our board still yet.
They were the last ones. Water plant?
Water plant, sewer plant, yeah.
Is everything ported over then? I just noticed our Frontier bill's about $1,000 less than what it normally is. So I'm assuming everything's moved over.
Here and the fire department office.
So all the numbers are ported over to the IP? Okay.
Did you get your phones in, out there at the police department?
Yeah, we got them in last week.
Okay, our thing working good?
Yeah, they've made a few adjustments. We had a problem with the fax machine for a couple of days. They finally got that fixed.
Okay, good.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Sure.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Flucker.
Upstate.
Mark.
Upstate.
Egling.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the public hearing. I think I announced that two weeks ago. April the 20th at 5:00 in the zoning inspector office. The lot split, application 402 South Bryan Street. Anybody's welcome to attend. Boards and commissions, I don't think anybody had any meetings, right? And council committee reports?
I don't have the minutes in yet, so I'll just give a brief description. It was a pretty short meeting. We've got a couple of citizens in the town of the village, women that reach out about stormwater solutions. So we, now as a committee, to kind of discuss best approaches there. Just from prior experience, one thing that I suggested is making a separate storm tap. If you don't have storm available, allowing a separate storm tap into the combined sewer, basically setting you up for when the village does eventually get storm sewer down those areas where order is separated, we would be able to basically pick up that tap from there. But that gives citizens, that would give citizens an opportunity to get rid of their storm water. It's something that we're still investigating. So like I said, it was a short meeting. Basically, just wanted to get councils or the committees' thoughts on it. So I'm kind of just doing some research on what that policy might look like, so.
Is that legal to do that? I'm just curious. Can actually tap into the sanitary?
Yeah, it would have a separate, it's a combined, so it's not, you're not a dedicated. If you have storm available, you would be tapping into storm.
But we've got to change ordinance that's existing that says you can't do that.
Correct. So basically, at this point, we're just looking at what the research, basically what other policies do, how they handle it.
Right. Okay.
Sort of thing. Sounds good. Any questions for that committee?
Just a heads up, Streetlight Property is going to meet on next Monday, the 24th, at 5:30. Troy, did you get my email?
I did.
Okay.
I did.
Okay.
Did you meet there? Where is it?
Next Monday at 5:30.
That's Streetlight Committee, right?
Streetlight Property.
Okay.
Police and fire met real quick tonight with interim chief Bruce. Talked about some of the operations going on. He's got some ideas about what he wants to see maybe happen with the fire department. But I know we're going to talk maybe later about, we've got five applicants, I believe, for the fire, future fire chief position. We can discuss that further. But so he kind of gives an update what's going on up to this point in time and some ideas for the future. So I think he gave everybody a copy. You can discuss that when he talks to your leaders. So we're also planning on meeting here, talking to Cheryl, and that's in your packet too, about the, it says fire levy within your committee. I think we're making more of an EMS side based with our revenue streams for the EMS department and coverage for those areas. So I think we're going to meet with Cheryl and, you know, question numbers and see where we need to be with that levy for the future operations of the EMS department. Questions online?
I would just, I guess, make a comment. Before introducing legislation for this levy, I would really like to see where the financials are coming in at. Like, I didn't get a really great description on what happened with fire EMS budget this year. Obviously, there was a pretty big shortfall. I'd like to see why that is. Is it contracts need renegotiated before introducing any sort of legislation to move forward? My thoughts.
I agree with that 100%. I know with Cheryl and the budget and even the finance department, you know, I've talked to, we've got two different committees kind of looking at the fire EMS, the budget police. But then, you know, Cheryl has actual numbers and we'd actually have to see, you know, bring John on board and see how his billing's going, whether there's some shortfalls, where he's not collecting money, where are the monies coming from with both our township contracts, our collections, and how those collections are coming in, are they Medicaid, Medicare heavy? And see where the shortfalls are. I know most of your revenue from those departments is going to payroll, which in most cases is where it goes, the coverage. You know, I'm talking to chief Bruce here tonight. We have one full-timer that's going to be on maternity leave coming up here. You know, we're kind of short staff now. We lost another part-timer here, took a different job at another department. So, you know, we're going to be kind of crunched with, I think we pay a lot of overtime too, if I'm not mistaken. That adds to your payroll increases with the staffing currently out. I agree with you 100%. That's why we're going to talk to her. You know, if we need to have more, we want to make it a, especially with a levy, we want to make sure we're doing the due diligence for the taxpayers, so.
Yeah, we betted heads today. Me and Mike. About the same question. And mine is, we have to have the whole process done by August. So I'm just letting you know, this would run through the end of May to get it read three times before it goes to the auditor, who has to come back to us. And then we have to have another resolution that has to go through three readings and have it done by August. So.
Let's get some more.
But I asked the same question that you're asking and was told it passed the state auditor's exam, so there can't be anything wrong.
Can you say that again?
I asked the same question that he's asked. It was told that it passed, all of our bookkeeping passed the state auditor's exam, so what's my problem?
Look, I don't necessarily think he's getting completely a bookkeeping issue. I think he's saying, like Taylor said, do the township contracts need to be up? Do we need to be doing something on billing, something different? Or is it just a matter of, we're doing everything we can do and we got this shortfall, so we need to do a levy to make up the difference?
Because frankly, to me, it seems like, as a, at least me, I'm not a financial or fire EMS, but it doesn't seem like we really know. And we're, we don't have all the details and we're going out and saying, hey, we should probably have a levy because we need more money. We're not 100% sure why we're, why we're overspending or, you know, are we, do we have the possibility of, you know, renegotiating contracts, those sort of things? I think we need to have all of that stuff and say, and compare it to, you know, what are other municipalities around us billing other townships where they were, that sort of stuff. Have those comparisons before we go out and say, hey, yeah, we need more tax money. That's my thought.
And we talked about that today, the crunch numbers. And that's why I said you have committee or we can do it in full council if we want to break down numbers and have John come, John does all the billing for both fire and EMS. You know, have Cheryl, John here counsel and we can crunch all those numbers to take a look at what, you know, where the shortfalls are.
Are we able to pull other municipalities' rates, billing rates? Does anybody know that? To compare to other places?
John probably knows that already. Like, you're talking about Sherwood and the Giants.
Yeah, I mean, other places throughout the state that are similar in size that serve multiple areas? Yeah, I'd be curious to see what those are.
He probably has ones in our area, but I'm just asking about that.
I didn't know if that was public, similar to like labor rates across the state or that sort of thing. Okay.
But the whole concept is if we're going to have any type of levy and or not a levy, I mean, we're going to, you know, to have it on the ballot for November, we had to get them all wrong for this. But we can always make changes to it.
So you're going to, you can just not read it tonight until you have the information you need. I'm just giving you the timeline. So we have to get you going.
We have the first reading, so it'd be three complete or two month and a half until third reading. Should have that information by then?
In the office. And it would be two in May, so it'd be to the end of May before this process went through. Then it has to go to the auditor and then come back.
Okay.
So you can either not read it or read it, whichever you want to do.
We don't vote on it anyway, you just read it.
Correct.
Numbers can be changed with each reading.
Well, if we read it, it gives us one reading, right? So we're not going to read it. We can always cancel it if we don't agree with it.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other?
Not a question before you can answer.
Questions? So you were reporting on your first years. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Administrators report.
I believe they are done with the foundation work there at the tower. Looks like all the, all the pads for the legs are done. Comes to the well field. Hopefully, Brian excavating can still get in yet this week. And then the electricians can also get in before the end of the week to get everything wired up. I do have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning with fencing construction, make the lane. It looks like that is going to be moved up a few weeks, which is good. The old pool house is scheduled for demo on May 15. It may end up getting demoed the Thursday prior, depending on if the contractor can get here soon enough. He's estimating it'll take about one week to complete that. We are hoping to relocate volleyball courts right after the demo of the pool. The new basketball goals in the park have been installed. And as soon as the contractor, Ohio Asphalt, can get to town, they will reseal and spray the basketball courts and put new lines and everything down on them. Gary and Val have replaced the swings down at Froggy Park. There's four swings down there that were in pretty rough shape, so they put brand, they had some brand new ones. So four brand new ones got put in last week. On Tuesday, the 25th of this month, CP Consultants is scheduled to come to town to do some drilling for Sixmo, do some geotechnical studies there for the new pool house, the base of the slide and the area where the splash pad will be. South Main Street had gotten striped and hashed out those three parking locations. And I did see that the delivery truck did use that today, so that is nice. The North Main Sewer, Sewer Main there, North Main Street was replaced back on the 12th. For the most part, it went, went pretty smooth. Took about three hours to complete it, so. One thing I do want to bring to attention is now that we got that yellow line down the center of the road, in front of, well, between here and the fire department, there's angled parking spots. Everything else there on down and across the road is all parallel parking. I want to get your guys' thoughts on taking those and making those parallel parking. Now with that yellow line, you get a vehicle parked there. It does hang out pretty far, so people still have to cross that, that center line so they don't run into like a longer truck sitting there. I'm assuming the only reason why those angled spots are there was for when the fire department was here, they had those angled spots for them to park at.
How many spots are there now and how many would we lose?
I'm not sure how many is there. Six, maybe?
You say they would stick out too far where if a truck's parked there, they would have to.
If they get full size, pick up trucks, truc, cab, and dolly.
You would have to go across the center, not like downtown where it's angled and it's not that wide then.
How'd you get determined where to put the yellow line? Because it seems like it just went on top of where the asphalt met, which I thought, we kind of thought maybe it should have been shifted a little bit.
Or centered more, I mean?
Yeah.
It's dead center.
Even?
It's dead center with this yellow line on North Main and it's dead center where it crosses Edderton and gets skid.
It just seems like it needed to be over further. I know what you're saying, but Edderton, you're right. You know, further down you go, but up closer to High Street, it seems like it needed to be shipped over.
The northbound lane is much wider than what your southbound lane is.
Yeah, and I thought that was going to kind of alleviate some of that, so maybe you wouldn't have to change those parking.
It's dead center to where the actual roadway is. If you go out and look on each side of that road, you'll see a tar strip. If you go from that tar strip where it was repaved to the center, it's exactly center. It lines up this part of South Main with, with North Main Street there.
You're centered from center line on this side to center line on that side. But the pavement's not. So you're curving, you're parking on this side, comes over this further than what it does on that side.
Correct.
So you're centered on those.
Kind of gives it that illusion of not even overparted.
Yeah, well, it's not an illusion. Your driveline is much more spacious going northbound than it is southbound.
If these angled spots are parallel, it would, I mean, it would definitely lie down here, your driveway.
Where are the spots at?
Right across from the fire hall.
Across the other side of the street. Right. Oh, okay.
I'm not a fan of eliminating parking, especially on this side of, this side of downtown, just because that's typically the site that's a little bit more congested. I did have somebody reach out to me about that, basically how, it's been a little while ago, but I know there was some discussion with H&amp;W having a blocked off loading zone. And we essentially, we didn't allow that, but now we are allowing it for subway. There was no discussion about that. So that was brought to my attention because that's essentially what the striped spot is, is for subway only.
What do you mean with, the people said that we won't allow nap and have loadings and they've had a loading zone ever since I was a kid?
Well, I'm saying there was a lot more issues with that than, than what this is over here. Were these people parked, do they unload and go to the, any of the other restaurants in town?
Oh, yes.
I thought so. I thought, I always see them bring all the stuff across the road. I thought it served possibly like two bands, Chinese or Palace. Two bands usually parks out front. I know SoHo for Palace parks on the north side, or the east side of Main Street typically. But I just know, it was brought to my attention that there was issues with H&amp;W's loading zone and.
I think the issue was with H&amp;W, they were using, filling up all those parking spaces with their own vehicles from, they think that was the issue. If I remember right, they, they were trying to claim that was a loading zone. There is a loading zone there, but not those parking spaces.
Well, I think, I think there's more reason, more of the reason to do that was safety.
Yes, about school bus.
More safety than it was convenience to, to the people that use it. And those people that are getting served by that truck right now are some of the older businesses uptown. Take care of it. Doing that and making it safer to travel on Main Street, plus we help a business, that's a no-brainer. You just do it. And if certain people that walk the streets every day don't like it, don't listen to them.
There was several of the people that did, that were displeased with it are business owners up there.
I know.
So it was essentially serving one business owner?
Well, the initial intent had nothing to do with the business owners. It was actually a bus driver that had come to the committee and had inquired about it. And he actually had photographs from the front of his bus where there were near collisions with the bus based on that being there. And it had nothing to do with actual businesses. It was trying to alleviate congestion as a safety concern for buses and our children. I mean, I, I understand, because one of the things that got brought up at the last meeting also was, hey, let's strike that line and then come back and reassess removing those parking spots. And, and that wasn't done. I saw that they were both done at the same time. So I see what you're saying, absolutely. The idea of, hey, let's see if this alleviates a problem before we do that.
Did the business owner tell you now, whatever you do, don't use, don't tell them I said everything?
There was multiple.
But it does service more than just subway.
Yes.
Yes. And it's already done, so I guess we try it and see how it goes.
Like Tony said, I would try. We met with them and the main reason was due to safety. That's what we did. We had to do it for any of the businesses.
We didn't sneak up on nobody. I mean, it's been around this table for three or four or five months, so.
I'm sorry, but you're a delivery vehicle and you're a driver and you're unloading a vehicle for service. I mean, you've got cars parked in different areas in town. You're going to pull up to the closest spot to unload and be at a timely manner and get your truck going to the next delivery spot. I mean, if there's cars parked there, they're going to pull up somewhere sooner or later and say, I'm going to park them in, I have to unload, you know, trying to help them alleviate that with the areas of parking.
Okay. Next on the agenda, any questions for Cory? Other questions?
Volleyball courts, are those, are the same posts going over there?
Light posts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the light posts and the, that's also the net post.
Yes.
Those are, so the light, there will be electrical over there also?
Yep.
So those will still be lit?
It'll be fed from the basketball court there. The lights themselves will be changed. I think those are still the old halogen.
And that was all part of Johnny's bid?
Not Johnny's bid, no. Johnny's just a relocation, pulling holes and digging the courts and resetting the poles. We'll paint them all up where they go back in the ground.
You had some people you wanted to bring before council. You want to do that now?
Sure. We have been running some interviews for some job openings. Had a couple of interviews today, so there's three people that I'd like to recommend for hire. Rebecca Summers for our cleaning position. She's already an EMR over here at the, at the fire hall, so she's had all of her background and drug screens and everything. Josh Hubbell, he is a local guy from town here. I recommend him, I'd like to recommend him for our wastewater treatment plant to replace Lucas. Lucas's last day was on Friday. We tried to be proactive with this position, so we've had it running for probably about two weeks or so. We had two really good people and Josh would feel, I feel it would be the best bet. And then Tim Baker, we've been running an ad for a part-time mowing person. And Tim Baker, he's a local guy from town here. I'd like to recommend him for, for the mowing.
Okay, we'll go right down the list for the wastewater. Josh Hubbell, recommend we hire him. Make a motion. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly. Martin.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Egling.
Yes.
Recommend Rebecca Summers to do the cleaning person.
She's not going to, that's not going to turn into another time and a half ordeal, is it? Because of the employment over here?
No, she's not. She's just $12.97 an hour.
I stand behind the air strip.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Egling.
Yes.
Recommend Tim Baker for the mowing position.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, no second.
No second.
Okay, roll call.
Mark.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Egling.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Anything else, Cory?
That's all I got.
More questions for administrator? Solicitors reports, Troy.
First thing I got is ordinance 2023-11, first reading by caption only. An ordinance to levy a tax for fire protection in the building in Hicksville directing the Fines County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and authorizing an additional tax levy for such purposes as we talked about earlier.
If I, so I'm seeing where it's basically, the levy would be a tax in excess of the 10 mil, is that what's currently there?
Like our permanent one?
Our permanent is 10 mil? And then we would be adding 5 mil to that? So I'm saying we're going to get the financials to make sure that if we're going to put one on there, that that's actually going to cover all the costs that.
Next is Resolution 2023-03, second reading by caption only. A resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the sale of unneeded, obsolete or unfit village personal property, including by internet auction for the calendar year 2023. Then Resolution 2023-04, second reading by caption only. A resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2023 and declaring an emergency.
I'm going to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark.
Yes.
Egling.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
So third reading, a resolution 2023-04 by caption only. A resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Remove.
Second. Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.[1715.64] Bassett.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Bar.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
First reading, a resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five, by caption only, a resolution to adopt the Defiance County twenty twenty-three Hazard Mitigation Plan and declaring an emergency. This is basically to make sure that we remain eligible for FEMA grants and things like that.
Do we have a copy of what this plan is?
It isn't, I asked for it, though. I'm not sure it's been officially updated until she gets all her resolutions in.
But just anything we've been doing with the contract.
I think it's part of the local labor scene.
Yeah. Or she has an old date on it.
Right, right.
Oh, I moved or something.
Second. Second. Roll call.
Bar.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five by caption only, a resolution to adopt the Defiance County twenty twenty-three Hazard Mitigation Plan and declaring an emergency.
Question real quick, though. So like respective natural hazards, does that, does that include like flood plain and all that stuff, or what is that like?
It's all part of it.
So who's involved in the discussions of defining those?
The local, or broader, the plank is involved in all of that.
Okay. I'll second that.
Beverly. Bassett.
Yes.
Bar.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Any questions for our solicitor? Okay, department heads, please chief.
Uh, I don't really... They've had our, uh, like I said, they finished up our phones. Uh, the one thing I've been waiting on is to get the individual voicemails sent out for everybody at the office. I think that's the last I'm gonna have to do. Had two contractors out last week for, uh, to take a look at the damage to the wall. I'm just waiting on their estimates, and we'll go from there.
Will, uh, their, their insurance cover that, or, or what was the term there?
Uh, I have not heard, uh, I haven't talked to Conrad myself, uh, so I don't know. Uh, he, he did show proof of insurance that he had it, so, uh, I was just told to get the two estimates from, uh, and then we submit to Conrad, and I guess he'll deal with it.
Okay.
So...
Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you. Fire, EMS?
I, actually, I have one question. I just have it. I see there's a lot more golf carts out and about. Are they looking for those to be licensed? I know if you go down to the park, there's a bunch that are not licensed that are roaming through the park.
I would hope they would, if they'd see one, that they would stop. We just dealt with one last week.
Okay.
Offices and it's complaining.
I just wanna make sure everyone's being safe. There's definitely a lot more golf carts out there, so I just wanna make sure everyone is compliant and paying attention to those, because there's a lot of kids in the golf carts, so...
So, yeah, I can, you know, again, for the village of Hicksville, they have to have, just like a motor vehicle, uh, they have to have license plates and turn signals, rearview mirrors, headlights, headlights, brake lights, horn, uh, and they have to have a license plate. We do, do the inspections for those.
And insurance.
And insurance, and it's, uh, they have, uh, small children. If they are the ages that require a booster seat or car seat in a vehicle, then they have to have one on the golf cart. So...
Thank you.
Yep.
I passed around two sheets. The one sheet is just my random thoughts. That's what we talked about in the P F P meeting a little while ago. There's some things that, that I'm gonna tweak, not major change. We're just gonna tweak a few things over there. Also, the second sheet was the amount of runs we've done in the last two weeks as of today, so everything's going well for me. John Elwood's been a real, real lifesaver for me. Been helping me do operations over there, so if you see John, tell him thank you for me. That's it.
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Can you elaborate on that thought, so the EMS has missed two runs? Does that mean like we just didn't have anybody respond to them?
Correct, correct. One was at three o'clock in the morning, you know, I'm gonna call you at three o'clock in the morning to try to rouse somebody up, and that didn't happen. Again, I, I personally think it goes back on the hospital, to the doctor, knowing that they're gonna release him or transfer him a little more than just a...
Transfer, not a...
So those were transfers, not?
Yeah, transfers, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those are transfers. And that top is, is just my thoughts of, of generating some money for the rescue squad, so... Other than that, another week. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm talking about, um, doing interviews for the fire chief. I think you have five applicants. I got four on the committee to help me get input. Mike Barth, Travis Phillips, a fireman, Bob Miller, and myself.
Meyer.
Meyer. We say Miller. Bob Meyer, so four. I was waiting on Mike here to get healed up, so...
Yeah, what's wrong?
We shaved your mustache, that's what's wrong. Anyway, um, might get started on it. See, this is Monday, maybe this week, uh, there's one that works, second trick, so I hope by the next meeting I'll have a candidate to bring before council. Okay. Park director?
I don't have much to say. We're back into doing ball fields and mowing, and we have our excitement down today, there today, we had a cow loose.
A cow?
Cow, and about back by the hill, by our building. They said it belonged to, we had schmuckers that burned down.
Oh, yeah.
How much did it cost to process it? All right, don't take, we should split it.
Wasn't a big one or a little?
Big one.
Big one. Okay. Anybody got any questions for Val or Barry? Start a mow, I'm guessing. Okay, fiscal officers report, Cheryl.
The only thing I have is to remind everybody that healthcare is until twenty-second, um, the hospital, and the thunder court, and I decided to highlight numbers, I hope they came over and highlighted. What came in and what went out so far this year? Not great. One point seven in, two point two out.
What is the, so the American Rescue Plan Act, so you're not showing, so it's zero dollars in revenue?
You're expending.
But you're showing a loss, though. So you're showing an expenditure and no, no revenue. So that was cash received equals cash out, right?
We found it in twenty twenty-two, and I was just sitting there waiting to be used and it's just for the water tower.
Yeah, so that was not necessarily a deficit. That was money in equals money out, just in a different fiscal year, correct?
Yeah, but I would, would like to remind all of department heads not to spend more than what they bring in, so we always have money in the bank.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what happened.
Anything else?
If I had any questions?
Anybody got any questions for Cheryl? Okay. Mayor's report last Friday, I was at a C I C meeting over the Defines Taylor, was there, and we had two businesses in Hicksville, um, held, I think, nine awards, but two came from Hicksville. Over two hundred and fifty people made nominations for these awards, so this was counting Y, it wasn't... So anyway, Jim Karen Schmidt got the Family Own Business Award, uh, so glad to have them. They, they were both there to accept that award. A P, A P T Manufacturing Solutions Excellence and Innovation, that award. I know that Jim and Karen Schmidt, they've been in town for thirty-nine years. I didn't realize that long. They have a hundred and ten employees here in Delphus. A P T, they've been in business for twenty-seven years, and they're owned by Tony and Shelley Niceenbacher, so hats off to them. It was a nice program they had, and this is the first year they've done this, so, um, that's all I have. Anybody got any questions for me? Billy, you'd like to say something?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Anything?
Sure.
Anything needs to become before this council?
I'm gonna remind people about the primary, May second primary?
Yes.
Right, uh, mayor, me, we have council right there, Bassett, Kate Miller, John Hart, right, for, for two seats, and get out and go.
That's only two weeks away, is that right?
Yeah, two weeks, yep.
Tomorrow. Wow, okay. Troy, yeah, Troy, Essex is running for judge.[1722.24]